All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the board in March 21st, 2023 Board of Education with a meeting at 7:00 P.M. Kenny, good evening to you and your roll call members.
Mr. Marrietti?
Here.
Mrs. Beck?
Here.
Mrs. Blaba?
Here.
Mr. Madana?
Here.
Mr. Tavuzia?
Here.
Mr. Plaza?
Here. Okay, the board has been established. For the pledge of allegiance tonight, we're going to be led by the Giles Boys Basketball Team. So if you guys can meet us in that, we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
The mission of the Board is to do differently, is inspiring educational excellence in an entertaining environment. Okay, thank you, sir. Before we get moving forward with the meeting, we're going to square in a new board member tonight. Fanny Theodore is going to join us here in the middle, and she's going to take her open bottles. So Fanny, we're excited for you to join the board, and now be committed in the middle. So can you raise your hand?
I am Fanny Theodore Duson, Deputy Director of the State Department of Districts and the Office Member of the Board of Education of Orange District Dade, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of practical Illinois, and the laws of the state of Illinois to pass the ban on them. I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interest by observing as the faithful protector of this whole district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the freedom of expression of opinion, and I call upon the board members and members of the school by hearing from all members of the county grants and subsidies. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual unless decisions can be determined by a majority vote at a public board meeting, and I shall abide by the community discipline of the board on returning the order to seek changes in such decisions for ethical and constructive change. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for the Board in the equitable quality education of every student in this school district. I shall foster with the Board an extensive participation of the community, formally discuss defined outcomes and set the course for the Orange School District Dade. I shall assist in establishing the structured environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain the maximum potential for the sound organization of their learning. And I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and quality conditions affecting the education of our children while time is wasted. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of the students and our community school, advancing the vision for the Orange School District Dade. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the Board that's created, fostering excellent graduate students in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and social development.
While you're doing that, we go to a celebration of success. So would someone like to pick that up? Mr. Viagin?
Well, first of all, we have a large turnout. Thank you so much for being able to have all the basketball players coming up here by the startboard. Thank you all for coming. So unfortunately, Mr. Coach Gepistoni was unable to be here due to a family commitment. However, he did prepare a presentation. Like Coach Gepistoni, all the faculty, the staff, and the student body, you got really impressed with all of your efforts this year. You are a bunch of talented individuals, and there was no I in the team. You all worked together as a team out on the court, and you really make us proud at home games, at away games, at the tournaments. And we have on display here, why don't we hold some of these, but we have our JV Championship Tournament Trophy, congratulations, and we have our varsity championship trophy. There you go, hold it on display. That will be put on display in the main office for all to view and enjoy for the rest of this school year. So as we can see, teamwork makes the dream work. Coach put a bunch of slides together. This one is good, better, good, better, best. Never let it rest until your good is better and your better is best. And then we have the roster, and then a bunch of other pictures that you'll see collaged. The varsity, the regular season went six and three, and they were the number three tournament seed, and they ended up winning. And who did we beat in the championship game?
Allen.
Allen, there you go, nice job. And our junior varsity had a perfect nine and O, they were undefeated, and they took the number one seed, and in the tournament, they beat Manay, which is always a tough, tough game, tough game, tough team to beat, so well done. Would anyone like to share an experience? I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anyone that would like to just to share their experience? Anyone? Anyone? No? Okay, they're very shy, but they're not shy on the court, and they did an amazing job, so let's get a wall of them. So what we would like to do is take a picture with you in the board of that. Why don't we do it in the center, right here? So let's come out over here. Let's make a couple rolls, let's put the trophies in the center on the floor. So why don't we get a roll of students kneeling, and then another roll of students standing, and then we'll leave the board behind and have a portrait change. So you guys can take pictures, go ahead, take pictures.
I hope you come back over there before we go there. If you guys don't mind, let us know where, tell us your name, so we might have something to put to the name, that'd be great.
So this is what we're going to do, so tell us your name, what team you are on, and just one word to describe the season. Your name, your team, varsity or JV, and one thing to describe, one word to describe the season.
Mine is all, I was on JV, and one word to describe it, I see it was spectacular.
There you go, there you go. Okay, why don't we go ahead, go ahead.
My name is Fox, I was on JV, and one of my first to describe the season was great.
My name is Neil, I'm on the JV team, second to the greatest to describe the season.
My name is Marco, I'm on the JV team, one of the ones to describe is fun.
My name is Kelly, varsity, and one word to describe was, four years.
My name is Shreth, I was on varsity, and one word to describe varsity was spectacular.
My name is Rob, I'm on the JV, and one word to describe the season was fantastic.
My name is Jordan, I'm on the JV, I just turned away first, season was fantastic.
My name is Julius, and one word to describe the season was historic.
We'll go this way in the background.
I was on varsity, and I was on varsity, and one word to describe it is fun.
My name is Brian, I was on varsity, and one word is good.
I was on varsity, and one word to describe it is great.
My name is Freddie, I was on JV, and one word to describe the season was amazing.
Frank?
My name is Frank, and I was on varsity, and one word to describe it was great.
My name is Deshawn, I was on varsity, and one word to describe the season is extravagant.
My name is Jordan, and I was on JV, and it was spectacular.
Yeah, thank you guys, everyone. Before you all, I'd like to thank the parents, thank you so much for all you do, making sure that they're at school, they're doing the best that they can, getting them ready for practice, and getting them ready for games, so thank you for all you do. So thank you, everyone.
All right, that was really great, Mr. Viagin, you guys first up in that, you're doing that, that's great. Anybody else on a celebration of success?
At Giles School, the band held a solo musical festival on Saturday, March 18th. The students did an amazing job, I'd like to thank Mr. Bacaro for organizing such a wonderful event. There were forty-nine participants, forty-eight had first place, one had second place, so everyone did an amazing job.
Mr. Viagin? Anyone else?
I'd say another celebration is the work getting started on the old learning center and the preschool classroom conversions, so we're really excited about that work that's going to be getting started.
I'll jump into and just say, I'd really like to celebrate the entirety of the Nor JV administrative team. I was able to take the time to go down to the IAAAS conference in Springfield, which is for any special education administrator, so I was able to do some really great networking, but this team did an incredible job, and I know feeling a lot of questions, I had a lot of emails coming at me during Springfield, but it was really nice to know that this team had really done a wonderful job supporting everybody, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, everyone. How is the board consider approval of the agenda as presented or contested? Under discussion, I'm going to, can you take a moment, please? Board member Theodore, specifically under consent fifteen A, one and two, and those are considered the approval for board minutes. One is January seventeen this year, those are closed session minutes, and two is February twenty-first, but this year regular minutes, for obvious reasons, not worth the time, so she's going to stay for approval, okay? So those will count for everything except fifteen A, one and two. Any other discussion? All right, how is for motion to approve the agenda as not allowed? I'll second. So Frank, second in by one. And your roll call member?
Mr. Tavuzia?
Yes.
Mr. Marrietti?
Yes.
Mr. Madana?
Here.
Mrs. Damar?
Yes.
Mrs. Blaba?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
I'd like to recognize our visitors tonight. Crowd dispersed, but that's great, red badge there. Correspondents, nothing to report since last meeting, public participation, anybody sign in? Anybody sign in to public? All right. There's no public, so we'll go with our FOIA request, this is a cover of more updated February twenty-eighth this year, request one, a copy of all holy material received dated in the year 2021 regarding repairs and upgrades including dates material, destruction of material, purpose, public material, so what it is used for, exact location material is used, example, the floor, copies of offices, drafts prior to the use of said materials, said holy material received, and the funding source of all the proceeds, district funds, grants, donations, and all other sources of funds, that is request one or two, identifying the source of all grants, donations, and other sources in requests on the block, including name, address, and amounts of each grant, donation, and other source. Again, that'll be on our website as of that date. Presentation, internal receipt.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I am presenting to you the curriculum fees and tuition fees as they stand right now, what we selected for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This is more of an inspirational piece, just so that you are aware of where we are in selection of these for this year. No, I'm Jenny Susie, not my thing this time. So to begin with, just a review, quick review of what the fees are for this whole year, the curriculum fees, they range from the preschool kindergarten area at a hundred and fifty dollars and go up to a high of two hundred and thirteen, excluding kindergarten and preschool, they average about two ten for this year. So what's the fees covered? The fees cover consumable books, so for example, the books that are used for superkids in kindergarten, or the goldman books that are used at Lee, and also the digit program that is used at Giles, for the microspecter program that is used at, so just a couple of examples, also social studies, science, all of the different consumable books. Technology is going towards form books and software. We have been able to purchase some form books in the last couple of years through master funds, which has helped our technology area. Our pride program, which are activities and events for the students. Other programs, PE, arts, music, and STEEP programs receive some fees, a few money for these, student materials like planner, and then our PDIS, palm art, PDIS, rewards, reward system, which is incentive for students, all the rewards are fees. So for a moment, I just want to explain to everyone on fee waivers in the Orange School District Dade. In 2022, we automatically waived anyone that qualified for SNAP, TAMP, foster care, or Medicaid. The waiver available, and then we also had a waiver available to all families based on income, so families wanted to apply for waivers on our website, and families can do that at any point. However, we cannot waive, ban extracurricular fees or tuition, so kindergarten tuition, preschool tuition, those are not, that are mandatory, they are not, etc. In twenty-three, twenty-four, after last month's board meeting, we were going to continue to waive SNAP, TAMP, and foster care, however, we are going to no longer automatically waive Medicaid. Families can still get a waiver off our website and apply for a waiver based on income, and again, next year, we will not be waiving, ban extracurricular or tuition. So where do these lists come from? The state of Illinois provides the list to us of families that received SNAP, TAMP, foster care, or Medicaid, but they do not provide any additional funds. On the next slide that we read for you, how many waivers we had in twenty-two, twenty-three? So families that qualified under SNAP or TAMP, we had a hundred and seventy-eight students qualify. Under Medicaid, we had two hundred and ninety-five students qualify, and under families that completed an application based on income or foster care, we had eleven students. So that's a total of four hundred and eighty-four fee waivers that we processed this year, which if with an average fee of two hundred and ten dollars, it was a hundred and one thousand dollars, six hundred and forty dollars that we waived in fees. Currently, right now, outstanding fees in first grade, we're looking at a little bit under three thousand dollars, second grade comes in right at two thousand, third grade a little bit under two, and fourth grade a little bit right in the middle, between two and three. These are fees that we have not yet collected, even though fees were due on March first. And great effort, what is given to be collected by that. Fifth grade, we're a little higher, six thousand dollars in fifth grade, we're in the middle of five thousand, five hundred in sixth, close to seven in seventh grade, and a little bit over six thousand in eighth grade. So that gives us a total outstanding curriculum fees, this was as of Monday this week, of thirty-four thousand dollars for first grade or eighth grade, these are curriculum fees. Turning towards kindergarters and preschool, preschool, currently right now, we have eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars in outstanding fees. So when a parent puts down their deposit for preschool or kindergarten, that money automatically goes to the B. So this eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars tuition that we're still collecting. In kindergarten, we're still collecting eighteen thousand dollars, two seventy-nine in tuition, for a total of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. So putting that all together, for the Board's clarification, in preschool and kindergarten, we are still collecting twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars versus eighth grade, thirty-four thousand. We have waived a hundred and one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars in waivers, and our total fees that are still outstanding is sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. We have an online system, Pushpoint is the system where parents pay fees. Twice a month, they receive a email to ask them to pay the fees. In addition, our registrar has been calling families, has called all of our eighth grade families, and our kindergarten family, preschool families, to remind them to pay the rest of their fees, and fees were due on March first.
What question, just questions?
To be clear, with the waivers, nothing is coming from the government to waive these, this is all coming from our budgets?
Correct. That is a really good question, because often people think that when they're waived, that there's some money coming from the fee waiver fair, and there's not. And please let me be clear, I certainly want to waive families that cannot afford it, I think that's important for us to do. So people have proof that they need their fees to be waived, then we can, maybe we can do that.
Absolutely. And with the outstanding balance of some that are owed, the only thing you can technically take away is when they get to eighth grade, my understanding, so you really can't do anything unless, until eighth grade, where you can hold obviously back graduation, or you can only hold any extra activity that are taking place for eighth grade, is correct?
Correct, yes. You cannot hold graduation at all for fees, and you cannot hold registering for the next year, or anything like that. Now, the Board did take action last month to put a policy change, which is on the Board of Education term. That policy change is that if a parent does not pay preschool fees or kindergarten fees by December thirty-first, that in preschool, they would not be allowed to attend anymore, and in kindergarten, we would move them down to the half-day program. That's tough, but I recommend that is something that we do, because we are, our curriculum is based on fee, that is how we purchase things that we purchase, so it is important for us to, for our use of these. You know, the full day fees for kindergarten and full day for the teachers, you know, if we had everyone half-day, we wouldn't be as many teachers.
So Michelle, is this punitive fees, so this goes over from year to year?
Correct. That is why we see such a large amount in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
I'm actually pleasantly surprised with these numbers, yeah, so you percentage of our overall budget, this is not, that's what I was thinking it's going to be. And then historically, where do we sit now for large first compared to June first?
Do you, unless you're speaking of?
Yeah, so historically speaking, they for large first is due, so monies are still trickle in, right?
Sure, of course, we're going to still be calling people and still be asking people for fees. The only other option that we have, I mean, I'm sorry, I think we're right in line with where we typically are at this time of the year. Now, it'll be a big change for us to move things to December next year, and we'll certainly make sure as we start registration, which will start to be after spring break, that people are aware of that. We're redoing all the reforms, so people understand, and having them sign, that they understand that the fees will have to be paid by December thirty-first for tuition for kindergarten and preschool. We have an option of, we've kind of talked about this a couple of times, of going to a collection agency. We have not finalized that yet, because there is a loss when we go to a collection agency as well.
Okay, so collections is my business, so yes, it's a loss, but it's less of a loss than not getting money at all. So what do other school districts do in here, do they use collection agencies?
They do.
Any other questions?
I'll go to a little Mr. Mathers, for Special Education continuing changes for twenty-three and twenty-four.
Okay, so what I wanted to talk to you more tonight was really just kind of how we are kind of re-envisioning how special education looks for the twenty-three school year and beyond, or twenty-three and twenty-four school year and beyond. We are doing a lot of really great things right now, that it really is focusing on kind of our next layer, like feeling back on how we can support students even further. So what I wanted to do is really kind of give you an opportunity to hear how some of the, what the loss is currently, what some of the resources that are available to us, and then kind of where this new vision will go in terms of how we can kind of support some of our students who are most in this kind of area, where they're still really trying to grasp those core concepts in their instructional things. So the piece here that I really wanted to draw to our attention is that we actually are in this department focused on federal law, so IDEA, the Children's and Early Years Education Act, and we actually do have a really big hiding principle to this, that's the least restrictive environment, and that's one where kind of has two major components to it. The first one being is that we really want to make sure that the kids, whenever possible, they're in any way through special education, they have that chance to learn alongside their peers who are non-disable. We don't, the kids learn their best when they're with their peers, they learn all kinds of different things, whether it's academic, whether it's behavioral, it's best to have that opportunity to be with them at all times, but it's to the maximum extent, there are times when it's not appropriate, that we may need to consider another technical environment that kind of helps support their development, whether it's academic, social, behavioral, et cetera. So that's where that second role comes in, where we do need to consider removing students from a regular education classroom, which you're typically envisioning only when that the nature of that disability is pretty severe, so if that child is really not making any growth in their academics, then it's time to look at another type of placement, even if we consider A and supports, maybe a co-teacher, maybe an A, maybe a combination, et cetera. So what we have right now is actually, this is taken actually directly from ISB, this is our, this is actually from the parent guide for basically special education as a whole, that kind of details our continuum of student services, how to provide special education, that old model of we kind of throw kids in a room does not exist anymore, we really have a lot more of a wider net. So the first area that you'll see at the very top is where most kids are learning, where we have general education, we have no other supports, no supplementary needs or services, and that's where a majority of varsity students in Norwich are learning, as well as we'll also see some students who also have speech needs, who don't get As well as we'll also see some students who also have speech needs, who don't get support, they just seize each language methodologist maybe a couple times a month. But as we go down, there's a little bit more support, that's where special education comes in. We have a general education with supplementary needs and supports. That's where our co-teaching comes in. A majority of the students that we have in special education are getting support in this level. They're in their typical classroom with their typical peers, but they have a special ed teacher to kind of help bolster them and make sure that they're gaining those skills that they need to, to make sure that they're making that academic growth through. I mean, let's get down on this one for a second here and jump down to our self-contained programs. Here are the self-contained, uh, self-contained places, excuse me. Where it's, we're talking about a student who really is more than forty percent of the time in a special education classroom. They're really, by the nature of their disability, they're needing a lot more intensive supports. But you'll notice as you go down further, it's less and less, there's fewer students. So this is where our leap, our stride, our miles students are. There's very few of them as we kind of go down this further, but they're the students who really need to tailor instruction very carefully so that they aren't, that we're really making sure that they're making meaningful growth in their own right. The last one that this board would never probably hear about either in this session or in the closed session would be separate special education day school. When we say that, we're basically talking about outplacement, that's, we're talking about the nature and severity of that disability, it's not something that we have the current support for. So we would need to work with our partner schools to help get them that support. As we're looking at this though, there was the middle piece that I kind of skipped over here is this resource support. And that's something that isn't quite as fully developed quite yet. And that's basically that we're giving a little bit more than co-taught, a little bit less than self-contained classroom. Kind of in the middle where we're really focusing a lot of support in that area. You can kind of see some of the breakdown, how we currently have. So again, a lot of our current structures are in place. We have this gen ed, speech-only, co-taught, leap-stride, and miles outplacement, but there's that middle piece that's kind of questionable. Now, what does this all have to do with all of what, like, what do we care, so data, right? If we're thinking about where we want to go as a district, we take a look at that MAP data. We're looking at national norms and percentages, which is basically how well do our kids do on a national scale, more or less, right? There are several of our IUP students who are in that lowest ten percent in both reading and math. And really at this point, we're kind of trying to figure out like, how do we help them? We're trying to help them in the co-top, but they're still not quite getting it. So the question is, is then what do we do to help them? And that's where I think the next stage would be to create this resource for that middle ground special education type of prior kids. Is basically going to allow those special education teachers to teach those few students, again, fewer students as we go down that continuum, but it's going to give them the opportunity to get a better pace for those students and then also offer them that intensity of instruction. We're not going to necessarily be able to cover all those topics, but we really want to hit those core topics that will let them be successful in grade after grade after grade. So why this particular level? So this actually has a couple of reasons why this is actually a, kind of a nicer model to work with because there's several reasons. But one of the biggest ones is that it offers a lot of learning options for the students. So it gives us an opportunity to say, hey, you know, a kid is doing really awesome in gen ed for all parts of their day except math, they just really don't understand math, no matter how many times we reteach addition, six days from Sunday is still not working. What do we do? We can look at this as a potential option to say, you know what, let's give this child a little bit more time with that teacher, you know, let's really focus on the pacing of it. Let's really go into depth instead of necessarily moving on to the next common course standard. The other piece of this too is that it does give a lot more support for both students and teachers. It's giving the teacher the opportunity to kind of say, hey, I can, I need to work with this wider variety of students in the co-taught setting, but then in my resource setting, I might need to slow this down a little bit, really focus on what the, what the kids need to go to the next grade level, the next standard. The third reason is more for the Giles oriented crew where this actually is pretty similar to what Ridgewood High School is currently doing. And it's kind of implementing that backward design where we're really kind of trying to help get our students up to the standards that Ridgewood is seeing as they come in. Naturally, this brings up a lot of questions on just how to restructure all of this, you know, hiring space. So a couple of just very brief points on this really. We are looking to utilize the teachers that we already have in place. This is more of like a kind of reshuffling and figuring out how we can kind of use what we already have. Again, a lot of great things, how can we use that to bolster what we have? And again, the teachers that we have currently who are co-teaching are really knowledgeable about the instruction that they're providing. So I, it's, it's wholeheartedly in our interest to make sure that our sixth grade co-teacher can also do a sixth grade resource. They know the curriculum, they know what needs to be done to get them to seventh grade. And then space, so Dr. Rebbi and Mr. Biakian, who have been incredibly supportive throughout all of this discussion. And we do, we do accommodate those building and spacing needs, although that is not going to be a session for us. Some other questions that may pop up as we kind of go through this is like, how many students are we talking about? Why are we looking at specific grade levels? Between grades three to eight, we really do have kind of a range of students. It's not a necessarily hard or fast number. But generally, we floated for looking strictly at those numbers that ten percent or less in MAP data, between three and eight students per grade. Sometimes that varies depending on trimester to trimester, but we really have focused in at about four to five students in a given grade. And we do look specifically at grades three through eight because that's where our data is best. We have a lot of robust data, we feel like we really know how well the students are doing. When we get into those younger grades, they're still learning how to learn. There's still that opportunity to kind of grow further. Another kind of common question that has come up as kind of we've continued to discuss this is, who makes the decision? And that is something I want to be very clear about. This is not a decision that I as a director will make. That is not something that I'm expecting a singular teacher to make. This is the parlor discussion at the time PT. Is this something that this, that the parents, the teacher, the administrator, all agree is best for this child moving forward into the next year? The last question that kind of had come up as well as we kind of continue to discuss this with teachers is, is this necessarily going to be the same every year? And the answer is, not necessarily. It really is driven by student need, not necessarily the need for a specific program. So if we have a lot of students who really need this resource level, then we'll make that kind of that direction. However, if we have fewer students that maybe don't, we can kind of take a look at what other options we do have on the table for us. The big piece of that is really just that maintaining that student focus. And we're really making sure that we're focusing on those unique learning needs and how we can serve all SED students. So the big question that's kind of all in this is how are we making sure that we support special education? The takeaway with special education is that we have a lot of diverse needs and we are willing to take the time to figure out what that means to help support them. So we're openly exploring a lot of different options that could include considering the need to hire another special ed teacher, but we want to take a look and see how our current resources are going to help benefit these students to the maximum potential possible. I'm going to leave you with this call by John F. Kennedy. I feel like this is really important to kind of help grasp, you know, what we're really trying to do here. We really are trying to look beyond the past or present and we really want to make sure that we are focused on changing for the future for these kids. Because I think this is, this is an opportunity for us to really seize upon some kids who are in need of help and we have the support to do it, we can do it. Thank you. Any questions that I can add?
And you have your administrative reports to defend the commission.
As you know, we have a few board election spots open on the board. And I would like to have the board's permission tonight to reach out to the candidates that are running, to schedule a time for some training and to start that process as our reorganization meeting was scheduled for May 1st. At the May 1st meeting, that is when we will end the board as it is known right now and we will bring on and square in the new, uh, oath of office for the new members. Just want to let you know to start working on that. I met with Mayor Tanhawler and the third grade team about Mayor Tanhawler coming in in May and working with our third graders under their community project and kind of sharing his knowledge and his skills and everything he knows about being a mayor. So it fits in really well, the third grade project. And I don't think the students know yet, but we're really excited to have him coming in and working with our third graders. Norwich, as you may or may not know, is celebrating its 75th anniversary. There are many things that are being planned, which I'm sure that I will have more about as we go further. I know there is a four-day event, carnival event going on at the end of August. At this moment, we are being asked to sponsor a banner, which will be up on Montrose Harlem Foster Camp Field or Cumberland Avenue. This banner will, is a 75th anniversary banner. We can have some written things on the banner, three lines if we'd like. And then it will be given to us after, after this celebration is, is, the banner is a hundred and fifty hours. We will look forward on putting up a banner for Norwich Patriots to celebrate the 75th anniversary of Norwich Patriots. Today at your tables, you, uh, you press plus one, one, one. You'll notice it's so much smaller than the last 75. So we will, this is our anniversary tonight, I just gave you a copy of it. Next month, we'll look at it on the first reading and then in May, we'll look at it on, adopting it, et cetera. Very few things in there, there are a couple of things we'll highlight next month, but I think we can have a little look there with the people. And that's our report.
Or any questions? Special ed report?
So much like we did in first trimester, we have already started to explore our second SED day-to-day. So we have actually already begun that, we're continuing that actually tomorrow. And going into the week after, we return from spring break. But we are focusing on all of the students' individual goals that have been set in their IUPs and making sure that we have figured out any, if any students have not met their goals, what we need to do to continue to move them along in that, in that positive direction. So far, it's been incredibly positive. We've had only a very, very few number of students that have not met either one or more of their goals, but it's been a really great opportunity to kind of talk a little bit more too about the continuing that we've talked about and see if there are certain students that may benefit from that additional layer of support. Similarly, we've also had a really great conversation with our SED committee. They have been very instrumental in helping put some of that, what you just saw with the continuum in place. They've been a really great sounding board, they've been very helpful in trying to shape what that looks like for Norwich and it has been another really great experience for us to work together with that. Two other pieces is we have, I actually seen a increase with some of our preschool evaluations. This is the time of year where we start seeing a lot of our students who are future Tigers start coming out. We start actually doing some early intervention, or, excuse me, some of our early intervention service students come in and we are actually providing them a lot of time to do evaluations, see, you know, if they have been, some that showing some signs of developmental ability, that we want to catch them as early as possible and make sure that they can get into our preschool programs and we can support them as we go on. So this has been a very exciting time for us and will continue to be. So look forward to more updates on that. And then finally, we have started our DLM testing, which if you are not familiar, IAR is for a majority of the students in the district. However, for some of the students who have significant cognitive disabilities, somewhere below IQ of seventy or lower have significant cognitive challenges. We actually do have an alternative state assessment that can go out to measure if they have been continuing to make progress on those academic areas, math, reading, and science. We have been able to start some of those. It has been a very exciting time to work with those teachers and start administering those tests. And we will be learning more about how we ship that going forward soon. That's my report.
Are those the principal report, Mr. Biakian, Dr. Rebbi?
Thank you. This week, we are doing IAR makeups. We should have that done by this Friday. When we return, or actually, yeah, when we return from spring break, we'll be taking the, fifth and eighth, I should say, will be taking the ISA, which is the Illinois Science Assessment. And then it's only for fifth through eighth grade. That'll be done during their science block. Dental exam forms for sixth graders are due prior to May 15th. So we've sent out a number of communications and our Giles school nurse has reached out to ensure that all families are in compliance with the state board of regulations regarding medical and dental. Friday, March 24th is an assembly, it's one of our favorite assemblies of the year. It's the rock, paper, scissors tournament, which kind of goes along with March Madness. As a reminder, Friday, March 24th is a early dismissal at 1:20. Students will be dismissed at Giles at 1:20. Spring break begins March 27th through the 31st. In athletics, our girls' basketball team finished their regular season and the varsity team made it to the LNAC tournament as well. Scholastic ball finished their season as well, ending it at a tournament at the Donald D. Stevens Convention Center in Rosemont. Boys volleyball, they had tryouts fifth and sixth headed on Monday, seventh and eighth headed today. Girls soccer tryouts took place on Monday. As a reminder, that is a hundred and thirty-two dollars, a check being payable to Norwich School District 80 and a current physical had to be on file for them to be able to try it out and be on the team. I'd like to thank our building leadership team. We are finishing our SIP plan that we will be soon reporting to you. So we're excited for that. They've done an amazing job with our SIP plan in our second year of doing those. I'd also like to report out that the Norwich Park District After School Enrichment Program, we have four sessions for five through eight, advanced sketching, Guitar Heroes, World Cup, and SEC, which stands for our Special Events Committee. Unfortunately, none of them reached the numbers needed to keep the course. So all, all, all four classes have been canceled because of low enrollment. So I wanted you to be aware of that. And that concludes my report.
Have a question. The after-school activities before, who created those? Were they from Norwich or were the students?
Norwich Park District. So in the beginning, they, the Norwich Park District had a survey, created a survey from our student population. Then they went back, took that survey, and then developed their year. And this is some of the things that showed an interest. Unfortunately, at this time, it wasn't, when the, when the programs came out, it just wasn't that of interest.
I got, I got a question. April 29th kindness day coming up, if we decide, is there any?
Never mind, God bless. Thanks. Is it? Look at you. And then, any other questions? Otherwise, that concludes my report. See you.
All right. So as I'm sure you're aware, we just had our parent-teacher conferences the past two Thursdays. Those were well-attended. Also, well-attended was a fantastic event, the mother-son dodgeball event. We had approximately a hundred and seventy-five in attendance for that event. That was really a fun time, a lot of energy in the, in the air, a lot of excitement. We are in the process of wrapping up IAR testing. Still have some makeups to do, but for the most part, the majority of assessments have been completed there. And this Friday, we have the fourth grade versus staff basketball game that we're really looking forward to, along with a, the rock, paper, scissors tournament as the halftime show. So that'll be a whole lot of excitement going on on Friday, which as Mr. Biakian mentioned, is a early dismissal, 1:10 for Lee on Friday. Looking forward to spring break. I know a lot of students have different things planned, so we're excited to hear about all the fun things that they do over that break. Coming back from Lee, April 5th, we have picture day here at Lee. And then April 14th, well, actually, I should say April 6th, you, I'm sure you've heard of the, the Lotzos versus Woodward, you know, event that's lined up for April 6th. So who will have their head shaved? We will, we will have to see, but that'll benefit the North Schools Foundation, which we greatly appreciate. As we mentioned before, that they were able to purchase the risers for Lee. Those came in, those were set up, they're beautiful, and we're excited to see those in use in just a few weeks for the Fine Arts Nights. And let's see, as I got sidetracked there. April 14th, we have PTA sponsoring a Wacky Science Assembly. So there's a lot of, a lot of fun events coming up in the next few weeks. And the after-school enrichment programs here, we did have four classes that were offered. Science Squad, Archra-Prentice. Science Squad, Archra-preneur, which I had to practice saying that once or twice, World Cup, and Creative Kitchen. And we're excited that there is interest in all of those programs that are continuing here at Lee. That includes my report for this evening. I'm sorry, can I go back for one second? Because I forgot to mention our fourth grade Battle of the Books team, which came in fourth place, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out as well. So thanks for giving me that opportunity. Although they came in fourth place, they did show great improvement throughout that season. So I want to make sure we give them that shout-out.
Very good. Thank you. Moving to building discipline. Mrs. Erdem, Mrs. Tarnal, Charles.
At Giles, we have one in school suspension in violation of Board Policy 7:195. One in school suspension in violation of Board Policy 7:1959 and 21. One in school suspension in violation of Board Policy 7:199 and 21. And one out of school suspension in violation of Board Policy 7:1959 and 21.
At Lee, we had four half-day in-school suspensions in violation of Board Policy 7:199. And three one-day in-school suspensions in violation of Board Policy 7:199.
I just stress, you know, let me say real quick. When we came on the board, we made an emphasis to support administration and support the work that you do in the buildings. And, you know, I used to work in a school myself. There's a lot of moving parts. So the effort that you guys put in, we greatly appreciate. Whatever policy allows and law allows, we support that in conjunction with totality of circumstances. You guys know the totality of circumstances. I just want to emphasize again, we support what you do. And a goal of ours was to work on the discipline here in the district. So we've done that, you've done that, we look forward to your help. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Staffing report, this is Goose.
This evening, we're looking at a couple of additional staff items and resignation and termination, which we'll talk more specifically about.
Board committees, policy, development. U.S.A. consent, can you go to policy change? So moving with their building grounds.
There was a committee meeting last Wednesday at 15. Most everyone involved, assuming grounds there. Loop and make it. We covered a lot of ground. There's a lot going on. Bee hyping, which is happening, it's going to explain. And there's a lot of remodeling playing, where local planes are drawn up and everything. A couple of which we'll discuss them later. And just to be excited, I've seen a lot of big things happen. Much needed. Moving on to law.
What's it? Communications. How do you guys?
Nothing to report.
Simple negotiations, nothing to report there. Education, parent-teacher interaction, as I mentioned before, are designated. Our committee meetings are scheduled. Norwich Park.
Nothing to report, but I'm still making some moving meetings.
Yes, we will talk about these in close session.
We have a consent agenda. It is the board to consider the approval of the consent agenda. All right, just another note, right, we might fight it at 15. So this is what happened. As for motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. Louie, second by Louie. Can you roll?
Mr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Valla? Mr. Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Trivio? Mr. Flah?
Yes. And then motion. As a reminder, our action, it is the board to consider the approval of our school district in summer school and extended school year program for June 2023. And you'll see it's noted, I don't answer to the board. Discussion? Unless a motion, Mr. approved, the Norwich School District may summer school extended school year program for June 2023. Second by Louie. Pro call, Kim.
Mr. Valla? Mr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Flah?
Yes. It is the board to consider to create a big package for the school administration area. I can't recall. Discussion? Without discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve to create a big package for the school administration area project. Motion. Frank, second by Louie.
Mr. Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Flah?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Valla?
Here it is. It is the board to consider the approval to create a big package for the school office and conference room. Discussion? Unless a motion to approve to create a big package for the school office and conference room. Motion. Or any, second by Louie.
Mr. Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Valla?
Yes.
Mr. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Flah?
Yes.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Here it is. It is the board to consider the approval of classroom home and renovation project kindergarten fourth grade classrooms at least. Capital funding? Discussion? Unless for motion to approve classroom home and renovation project kindergarten fourth grade classrooms at least. Hold on. Frank, second by Louie. Pro call.
Mr. Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Valla?
Yes.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Murray? Yes.
Yes. Unless the board to consider the approval to purchase an RTU, Norwich rooftop unit, the least school administration area on the asset three. Discussion?
I just wanted to note that this, I mean, basically in conjunction to what's happening with the fund, this is definitely something special.
So it's part of the capital funding?
No, it's actually refunded, but it's part of the process. But it won't cost us, we'll just purchase the unit ourselves, and our MEG team can put that unit in.
Right. That would save a lot of money. Okay, noted, Frank. Thank you. Unless for motion to approve the purchase of RTU rooftop unit for the least school administration area. Motion. Frank, second by Louie.
Mr. Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Valla?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Theodore?
Here it is. It is the board to consider the approval of the replacement of fire panels in Giles' evening space. This is part of the discussion. Unless for motion to approve the replacement of fire panels at both Giles and the school. Motion. Okay. Molly, second by Louie. Pro call, Kim.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Valla? Yes. Mr. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Flah?
Yes. And that also occurs. Moving on to our discussion items, which are the students.
Like six seconds to make a discussion. The first one, and I mentioned this last month, we've been working with a group at West Forty on a districted school video. And I highlighted for you, what we're looking to do is showcase our schools to the community and shed light on what it means to have Tiger pride and Giles dignity. To celebrate our long history of graduates, look at a couple of our programs, like our preschool program, our kindergarten program, understand what it means to be a middle school student, and then also highlight our rich wood, our partnership with the government. And how we will do that is by providing a backstage peek into student-centered culture through the district, the school staff, and then for students, input interviews. And I included on here, and let me click on for a moment, this is just an example of a video that has been done in the past. Or we'll teach you something like that.
I didn't hang on school, that's the way I know from the high school. It must be something like to write stories.
I remember, it's a little hard, but you know, to get into the rhythm, it's really, really nice.
I love it, it's very similar to what it is. Yeah, I have friends who, as we take over, mission, a goal, is to make those things a reality. We're accomplished by building meaningful and sustainable relationship with students and families. The foundation-
We're not going to run the whole video, but that's the type of video that we're looking at. So it would have some interviews in it, perhaps some students who have already gone through the district, some teachers, some parents, and highlighting our schools and our district and what it means to be part of Norwich School District. This will probably start to take place in May and June. We want to include some footage of the new preschool area. So that is scheduled right now, we finish June 2nd. So we'll probably go to this out in July, August, as we look forward. This, of course, is one of our strategic goals, is to be talking more about our programs, to be getting us out there more in the community and to people understand and recognize the work that we do here.
And is it strictly on our website or is it something that we're doing?
It goes on on YouTube, so we can send it out in many different forms. There's a wonderful book through West Forty that works. The next item I included in here is our district preschool program. We are beginning registration the week after spring break. We already have April 4th and April 12th set up for registration. Tomorrow, we'll be sending out the links for people to sign up and posting this information on our website. As you recall, last month, I spoke extensively about the preschool for all brand. We have some screenings set up for that as well on April 28th, May 26th, and then we have, actually, I think there will be two June dates. We're trying to finalize those right now with the staff. And then we do have a preschool calendar that you approved in the consent agenda tonight. We have identified in August through June of next school year one screening date per month, which is what we are required to have. Just a reminder, there are 34 spots that are available for the 23-24 school year for students who are at risk. And I included again the point scale, just to walk through how parent, how students receive points. Any students who is homeless, a foster child has an IEP, or it serves levels of income for the families, receive 50 points. And then it tiers down from there for 25 points. If a teen parent at the birth of the child, and the primary caregiver that is in high school, they receive points for each of those. If a child is born outside of the United States or if the caregiver speaks a language other than English, there are points given for those. Anyone, a parent who's an active military, receive points. And then if you find any delays in the screening, they receive points. And then if a student does not have any past school experience, so maybe they haven't done preschool before, they haven't cared for that, they receive points. Our preschool team is attending the New Year preschool screening this Friday and watching it in action. And then we'll have our first date here on, I'm sorry, April 28th. We are moving forward with registration of preschool and kindergarten, as I shared, we are April 4th and April 12th. It's going to be a little trickier now because parents may hold off to register because they want to first attend a screening. And that's the right to do that, that's what they'd like to. But we still probably have a hundred kindergarten on there that will start getting registered and ready for registration. Any questions about the preschool program? Registration for 23-24, I can't believe it, but we are starting registration on May 1st. We'll be sending out information on how parents will access registration through Power School. We will remind them to go out there now and start practicing their passwords. We do not have your password anywhere. We can reset some passwords, but parents need to go out there and find their password or pick, "I don't remember my password." Often, to be honest with you, the issue is they don't remember which email they use to sign in. So you use your email, sign in, you can start looking at the forums. We will not open it until May 1st. Residency information still needs to be, it must be sent to our residency@norwich80.com email, which will be outlined in our information. Residency is closed during the month of July. So we are really encouraging our current students to get completed before the end of the school year. Also, we want them to take advantage of the 5% with pro-returning students, registration pro-returning students. We want them to take advantage of the 5% that they can save on fees if it paid by August 1st. So we're really encouraging all of our returning students to complete our registration through Power School and when we open it on May 1st. Anyone that is new to the district or if a student is new to preschool or kindergarten, they have to come to a registration license. And that, we'll be sending out the link tomorrow. Any questions? Couple of things that are on this vote for legislative updates that I wanted to share with you. The first one, which is House Bill 2396, is a legislative House Bill mandating school day kindergarten in Illinois school districts by 2027, 2028. Now, this House Bill first came out and kind of was stagnant right away because it didn't have a lot of late movement because it wasn't offering anything as far as funding for school districts. This is a large burden on school districts, as it would be for us as well. So they are relooking at the House Bill and doing a survey, it's based on a survey, school districts, to determine how many are unable to pay for holding and the scope of what would be needed. And then they're looking at if they are going to mandate an implementation by 2027, 28, they're looking at if there would be a cost to the funding for the district. So this is something that's moving pretty quickly, so I wanted to make you aware of that. You know, 2027 seems far away, it's very now. The second line is the Educated Social Support Services, which is House Bill 2784. This one would put in a pay scale, an hourly pay scale for custodial employees, transportation employees, food services. For us, this would affect us with classroom assistants, administrative staff, and parents professional educators. And this would, it says that by 24, 25, that we would have to be at a minimum of $20. And then, as you can see, it would go up from there, $21, $22 for the next couple of years. And then their tax rate would raise at the amount of CPM. Currently, right now, for this year and next year, $5. These have not been signed into law yet. However, they are moving quickly, and they may see this soon. So I wanted to make you aware of both of those legislative changes. Today, our auditors were in the district performing a single audit. This is the first time we've had a single audit. Well, since when? Oh, thank you. First time ever. Now, you qualify for a single audit if you have over $750,000 in federal grants expenditures. And we did in first of year 22. All right, just a little bit over. When was the act come out? It was like 784. 784, so just a little bit over. This is something we're probably expecting the next couple of years as well, especially because of the ISEF on schedule and this year. Everything that we heard from the auditors so far was good. We'll get a final report from them very soon, but nothing was concerning. What they do in this case is they sent many about the different line items that they wanted to see all the details of. And this were from our government. So, you know, we spent money on this, and they wanted to see the actual purchase order for every one of the items. So I'll share the report with you once we receive it, but we're not expecting any issues. And finally, uh, Norwich and Howard Heights Kindness Day, gender shit now, we included our bodies. Is scheduled for April twenty-ninth, um, here in Norwich. We're working with PTA to, um, collect personal care items at each school on the weekly up to the Community Kindness Day. And then on the twenty-ninth, we'll be opening up a gym here at the school for families and community members to come in, to help add on the items, and to give back, to write cards. Um, along with that, and these cards will be delivered to the senior centers, to be delivered to, uh, those in uh, it was great success last year, we've been around, said we can, I'm sure there's still some of them around in the community, and we're excited to, uh, take part in this as well. I'm sure there will be a couple of new things unfolding along with this day here, and we'll be able to do it. Any questions? That is my important.
Any board comments?
Just quickly, uh, I want to go back to, um, the reports, uh, and I don't know, it's just not sitting well with me, because the after-school, this is for the after-school programs, and, and, you know, we came out and we want to do things for after-school, get the kids involved, and, and at Giles, I understand the different age group, a lot going on after-school, uh, with the activities, but when you were talking about the programs, were there similar programs at the, at Giles?
There was the World Cup that was the same.
Okay.
And, let me see, that was from Beverly.
Yeah.
So it was just, it was just the World Cup that was the same.
Okay, and then when, when they, um, did these surveys, was that through Norwich Park? Did you guys see these surveys, did you see what students were interested in, or was it straight to Norwich Park?
It was, yeah, through Norwich Park, that's right.
Okay, now, in the four programs, roughly, and I, you don't have to be an exact number, how many kids within the four programs signed up in total?
Of the ones that got canceled at the end?
Correct.
So I don't know that, so I, I was, I got notified, let's see, today's, I got notified, uh, on Friday, I think at two, around two o'clock, that the, uh, actually, sorry, it was Monday, yesterday, at two o'clock, I got notified from, uh, the Park District that the classes did not reach, uh, minimum numbers, and that they would not be, uh, that they were canceled, and that the Park District notified all of the individuals that did sign up, to let them know that it was being canceled.
You know, one thing that I want to do in the bits with Norwich Park, um, whoever signs up in these camp, we don't have enough kids, I would like to get together and try to figure out a program that, that kind of, and out there, and they say, yeah, that's what we want. Because I don't want, you know, I don't want this to become a, a problem. I feel bad for the kids that want to do some after-school programs, but not enough kids, but what can we do? And take the total number and say, hey, let's sit down and figure out a program together that you guys will all enjoy.
Sure. And the survey, like, went out through our tracks. We didn't run the survey, but we did advertise the survey. Um, and they did pick, as, as Mr. Brady said, classes that were identified in that survey. Um, I don't know if repeating that might have been a good idea, I don't know, we haven't done this since the fall. But I, but I hear what you're saying, that you want to make sure that the students that want to be involved in something have the opportunity.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, because, I don't know, are we falling short by a handful? Is it, you know, one or two kids signing up? Is there something that we can, if they're willing to come to lead and do, you know, because they're older, we can coordinate something? I just don't want to leave them out because we're, we're short numbers, right? So, that, that's all I just, I just want, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, one of the thoughts that came to my head is when this survey was done at the beginning of the year, and they showed an interest of, now that it's spring, maybe they have, like, A U basketball, I know is going on, so maybe a lot of the spring sports that, or spring activities, I should say, plays, stuff like that are going on, maybe those individuals that signed up for it at the beginning of the year, maybe they're already booked, or maybe have something for the spring. I don't know if that's be the answer, but I could imagine that being possibly, possible.
Oh, I a hundred percent agree, uh, with, at that age group, the after-school, but I just don't want it to end where, oh, we don't have enough kids, sorry, let's move on. I want to really dig in to see if there is something we can do, right? Um, you know, how, how far are we with actually having one activity where it could accommodate, you know, the numbers, but that's all I'm saying. I, I'm not disagreeing that there's stuff going on, but I want to make sure that we're taking it one step further to make sure that, you know, if there's something we can do, we can do it.
I, I think I agree, so different approaches needed, and I know for, at least from my household, when I see that programs are offered, when they first started coming offered, I thought, oh, this is, this is really good. And now I don't really look at them, I, I fully commend the Park District for having, they should, and it's very good. But, like, when I see them down like, uh, like they're really canceled, I'm not going to pursue it. So I think something has to be changed, reversed, and how they collect, who wants to, what they offer, because when I see them I don't have kids who want, I don't have kids who want to play it, uh, that probably will cancel, so.
Sure, and, and, you know, this is, you know, funds that, this is still free, technically, so I think as much as, I mean, we know our kids needing administrative teachers, know our kids at all, so if you see programs that you know that our kids would enjoy, I would like for you guys to also recommend that to the Park District, you know, uh, because what, what they see might be hip and popular right now, it might not fit for our kids, and, you know, there might be some interest elsewhere that I would like our team to recommend for you seeing.
One thing that we did change this time, they did change this time, was the look of the flyer, because that had been the same flyer we had been using, so we tried to change that up, that was the suggestion we gave them, so that maybe people would put a different look onto it, a different eye, and not just be like, oh, that's that same purple flyer that always comes around. One thing we might want to try to do, uh, is, you know, the PTA this year, uh, separated out the dances between fifth and sixth grade and seventh inning. And maybe if we look at, while I know that may sound limiting, it may also help fifth and sixth grade students to get involved in something and be in more of their comfort level, if they know seventh inning created right there. Um, we did have very suc- very successful dances with that sixth grade and then seventh inning, so we should look at something like that. Maybe put together some focus groups over at Giles as well. We do have another session that we'll meet, one more time this year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Brady and I can talk about that with, uh, you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all right, that's who I can, it's like, it's something, I'd like that it is. Until the money is available, you know, really.
It is, yeah, they're free classes.
Yeah, but that's all, thank you, I appreciate it.
And just to be a hint, sorry, remind me, how many students are at Ridgewood right now?
Fourteen, uh. Uh, I believe forty, forty, around forty-six.
That's awesome.
A lot of kids.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of kids, but I mean, it's still a hundred tomorrow. Thank you.
Unless, we board considered more inclusion, closeout, discussing employment, how you're practicing performance, or just as well specific employees rectified by S C S. The purchase of used real property, so called, of, of body included means how, the purpose of discussing whether, particularly partial can be acquired. Again, checked by S C S, and then review of positions. Any discussion? I'll ask the motion, or you just mentioned.
Motion.
Second. Frank, second by Frank. Kenny, third, pro talk, Kenny.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mrs. Madonna. Mr. Flah.
Yes.
Mrs. Thack.
Yes.
Mrs. Valla, Chris, Mrs. Theodore.
We'll go to time, it's eight twenty P M, we'll be in close, uh, three thirty, three five, we will go. All right, we're back in open session, we'll move to time, it is ten twenty-one, that's P M. Personnel action items. Consider the approval to hire Marcy Matthew. Speech and language pathologist, language three step. Discussion. Uh, unless for motion to hire Marcy Matthew, speech and language pathologist, language three, step three. Motion, second. Lou, second by Frank. Pro talk.
Mrs. Madonna.
Yeah.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Flah.
Yes.
Mrs. Valla, Mrs. Theodore, yes, Mrs. Thack.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Carries. And has the board considered the approval to hire Patricia Luwach for nurse at Giles School.
Yes.
Discussion, I'll ask for motion to approve Patricia Luwach here for Giles. Motion. Aye.
Can I have it?
Renzo, second by Lou.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Madonna.
Yes.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mrs. Thack.
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore.
Yes.
Mrs. Valla, Mr. Flah.
Yes. Okay. Consider the approval of resignation of Marta Segovia affected at the end of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Discussion. I'll ask for motion now to approve the resignation of Marta Segovia affected at the end of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Motion.
Sorry. Okay, uh, Molly, second by Frank, pro talk, pro talk.
Mrs. Thack.
Yes.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Valla, yes, Mr. Madonna.
Yes.
Mr. Theodore, yes, Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Flah.
Yes. Carries. Consider the approval of the resolution for not only role in dismissal of first and third year provisioned teachers in Norwich District Eighty. Ena Bonner, Marcy Matthew, and Dave Tapp. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to approve the resolution for not only role in dismissal of first and third year provisioned teachers from Norwich School District Eighty. Ena Bonner, Marcy Matthew, and Dave Tapp. You did. Yeah, second by Molly, pro talk.
Mr. Theodore.
Yes.
Mrs. Thack.
Yes.
Mrs. Valla. Mr. Flah.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mrs. Madonna.
Yes.
Carries. Consider the approval to terminate the administrative assistant to the Board of Education. Discussion. I need a motion to approve, to approve this. To approve, terminate, terminate, void, administrative assistant to the Board of Education.
Motion.
I'll second. Molly, second by Lou. Pro talk.
Mrs. Thack, yes, Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mrs. Valla, yes, Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Madonna.
Yep.
Mr. Theodore, yes, Mr. Flah.
Yes. And that carries. Uh, boy, when you're talking to them. Danny, this is the time when you do, you do a document, you can look back over the meeting tonight, voice your opinion, it's kind of crazy, and hope that it was the board who approved this case. Take your time. You're gonna second.
Yeah.
This is your.
I do remember Tim Watson reading one time, "Crazy meeting hours."
Man, he's a re, just real quick, and then I'll, I'll.
Carries.
Crazy meeting hours.
So let's have a, Steve. There's no speed by. Mark, February twenty-second. All right. Hold for that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Hold to time is, uh, ten twenty-five. Motion. Motion made by Lou, second by Lou. All in favor?
Yep.
May post any.
Yeah.